This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, Carla, can you call the order, please? I call to order. The Town Council, Town Ocean Ridge Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for February 22nd, 2022. Roll call, please.
Chair Marsh.
Here.
Vice Chair Carrie.
Here.
Member Henigan.
Here.
Member Hutchins.
Here.
Member Cousins, here.
Okay, can I ask all to stand and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which is ours. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
At this time, I'll ask if there's any public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on. Now, as the commission, somebody wish to approve the minutes?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Item number two, which is a quasi judicial hearing for 113 Island Drive regarding the landscape plan. Is anybody here representing?
Can I just introduce it really quick, the item, and then we'll, I think, there is somebody here to introduce the project further. So, as you all know, they were before you for the entirety on January 24th. You guys approved with three conditions at that time. The conditions are outlined in the order, which was that they had to meet all conditions outlined by staff, that landscape plans need to be approved by planning and zoning before the issuance of a building permit, and three, there shall be no modifications to the pool or the backyard of the property without being brought back before the planning and zoning commission. Since then, they have resubmitted for their landscape to come before the planning and zoning commission. Manny is here. Corey unfortunately cannot be here today, so Manny, who is sitting in Corey's seat, is, and he is our zoning official, for those that do not know. He will be filling in. He did the calculations in regards to zoning, and he'll be talking further on that. The only thing that I want to bring up is that in regards to the landscaping, there was only one comment from Tara. The four Montgomery palms adjacent to the southway property line appear to be in conflict with the drainage pipe, exfiltration trench, and the lateral to the roof drainage. So either those are going to have to be moved or removed completely. So she can work with them on that during the building permit, but I do want to notify that those four Montgomery palms in the southwest of the property line.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak on this subject? Oui, please, and?
And they do have, um...
Do you need your smart people?
Yeah, I agree. Anybody else want to speak? Renee?
Anybody raising, anybody wanting to speak on this item, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Do you swear affirm to the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, when you come to the microphone, please state your name and address clearly for the record, and say whether you have been swearing or not.
Regina Subco. It's working, is it? Regina Subco, representing 113 Island.
Are you a landscape designer?
No, I actually work with the builder. Landscape designer could not be here again.
Mrs.?
Do you want to defer it?
I would like to make a motion to defer. The disrespect that is being shown to this commission just is beyond the pale.
I agree. Since this is the one item, a little bit of an insult not to.
If it's not important to them, shouldn't be important to us.
May I speak? It's very important, that's why I'm here today, sir. We asked the landscape architect to be here, and she could not, or he could not.
You can defer to me.
I don't think quite the same issue that some of you do. I think we should listen to staff, listen to her, and if we're still in the dark, then we should insist that we defer it and get the proper person here.
On that subject, that's what I was going to, I was just going to suggest that we share any of our current comments. No action will be taken. Does that feel? I know it's...
It will be deferred by default.
That, if someone moves that, and it's approved, then it's okay. But I think it's, it's fair to just have any concerns that any of the commission or staff will have from the submission.
I do have one question about it. Was there a reason given why the landscape architect could not be here?
She was not feeling well.
Well, Mike, why my?
We did ask several times.
Why my suggestion, yes, just one second, is we're all here now. I don't think it's unfair to share any concerns we still have, rather than deferring it to another meeting, and then we have to defer it again. I think if we can share, if anybody has concerns, I encourage you to, you know, share that with the commission and the applicant, and let's see what... Obviously, deferral is an option that we need to look at. So I'll open it to any discussion of the commission.
All right, so I'll remove my motion.
Thank you.
Yes.
I hope.
Mark, do you want to hear from the zoning official first, or would you like to maybe?
Yeah, I said, yeah, I didn't see that much, but Manny, would you like to bring us up to speed as to your position?
Maybe I could don't know, with the town which merge, with the side plan, a review of the requirements under section 66, 151, 66, 118, and 66, 119.
Can you pull the microphone in, right, right, right into you?
It's not working.
Can Manny come over to the?
No. That was working.
That works. I apologize. In review of the submitted landscaping site plan under section 66, 118, which is the general landscaping site plan, 119, which is the installation and maintenance of plant material, and 66, 151 are the trees. The landscaping plan does show the minimum requirements of 12-foot tree heights. They're proposing 16 feet for the trees. And the minimum requirement for trees are six. They're proposing 24. Trees 15 feet from the property line, they have five, I think, the delivery up there shows five in the front property line. And the minimum requirement shrubs are 36. They're proposing 275. So as far as the zoning aspect, it does meet the requirements.
Okay, thank you. Rich, you had a comment?
Yes.
Can you come up?
The comment about the drainage will be in conflict with our recommendation, I believe, for that sub.
Could you come up, sorry?
The comment regarding the, the comment regarding the drainage and removing the trees would be in conflict with our recommendation. And I believe that is that very stark wall that blocks any architectural renderings as one window. Now, could you clarify that on the plans so that we could see?
So on the southwest side?
I believe that's the... Yes.
Which is the southwest?
Show the visual rendering.
That's where the, I think, the Montgomery palm.
They have a rendering for the side?
I didn't have my, yeah, yes. You can see, I think they've added now, that you can see the palms on that side, on both sides. So that would also be in conflict to a part of our recommendations, so I think that should be considered.
Good point, thanks. Okay. For discussion with commissioners. Neil, you have any comments?
Yes, I wanted to have a discussion with the architect to what the consideration was for the existing foliage that was on the lot that was removed.
And that would be something she would have to, they would have to answer.
I know.
And that's all done, right?
It's all been, it's all been removed.
But we had a permit for that. We had a permit to remove the trees that were on the property. Well. In the demolition permit, because I actually asked the builder that, because he brought that up last time at the meeting.
I'm not saying he didn't have a permit. I was asking for why wasn't there consideration to keep those trees?
Because I was told that they were no good.
Okay.
And they would be in the way.
Do we have any documentation from the town that the trees were considered damaged or?
We haven't had any reports from the builder or anybody that's represented.
Yeah, I think...
So my question will then become, okay, if the trees were so damaged, why were they sold and moved down the street and replanted? That's where those trees went.
We have, you have strong evidence of it.
I have pictures right here that I've already given to the town at a prior meeting. I have it right here.
And they were sold?
There's the tree, trees on the truck going down the street.
Can I see that, please? Can I see that, please?
I'll be glad to give you power once and after the meeting.
If you're developing a property, are you required to retain the existing trees? I don't know, this is a question.
There's nothing written that I know of. Protect the trees. I think it's, it's more a good practice if you have mature trees, either you can work around them protecting during construction, or you can move them off-site.
Dave, I'm not using the word required. I'm not even going to ever use the word must with this. What I'm trying to understand is the logic. Why? What was the why? Those trees were there, those trees were part of our neighborhood, those trees.
I'm looking at it right now. I kind of agree with your thinking, but the trees aren't there now. And they're presenting something to us that is in compliance with our code, and as far as I can tell, seems to exceed it in certain areas. Now, this business about palms along the drainpipe, that, that to me is something that should be thought about. I mean, it would have been a nice idea, but they had a permit, and they're gone. And, you know, we can't, I don't think we should penalize them or really interject this into the process. I like what you're saying, and I think you should just move forward with this, if we can.
Can I ask counsel what her opinion may be on this?
I'm going to have to depart to town editor, because I'm not aware of a code that requires the town to keep mature trees. I think, as the chair suggested, it's a best practice that if you have mature trees to try to save them. But if they had a permit to remove trees, then legally they were allowed to.
Yes, but if it was based on the trees being damaged, the evidence doesn't indicate that's what was a rationale, a correct rationale.
Well, if they had an arborist on the Florida statute that would test that the trees were not healthy or potentially going to damage property, then that would be grounds for them to remove it.
And that's why I asked, did they submit that?
Let me, let me.
I'm not aware of it, and I don't think we necessarily require that for lot clearing necessarily. We don't have any requirement they have to keep trees. I mean, we do try to give applicants a discount on their permit fees. They do try to keep existing trees to try to promote that, because we do want to promote for them to keep them. However, we do not have any requirements. And I can check in the permit to see if there's anything from the arborists, but I don't think that that's a requirement either for a lot clearing.
Yeah, I can tell you, area-wide or municipalities, there's very little documentation or legislation to protect existing trees, unless they're historic or designated.
Not as currently, so staff is working on the landscape code, just so you're aware.
I think we all agree with your philosophy. I support that 100%, but I just don't think there's a way or method that we can force that right now. It's an unfortunate thing, because I am a tree hater, too.
May I ask a clarification? Was this demo permit obtained prior to the changes that we recently made with not permitting full demolition permits without having seen rebuild plans?
So in, and I can't, I can't remember exactly when they put the demo permit, but inside that code, you could either have approved building permits, or you can decide that you just want to have a clear lot. So they, they have those two options. Somebody can say, hey, I don't want to build for right now. It might take me two years for me to build, but I want to have an empty lot. And if they certify that they're going to have an empty lot, and they're going to seed and sod it, then we do have to move forward with approving a demolition.
Okay.
Yeah, there's nothing... You know, I think the encouragement should be mitigating, you know, kind for kind. You have a...
Once you're gone, that's all it can do.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what we can make recommendation here, this commission, to look at something, at somebody, if there was a really specimen tree on a property, if for some reason they have to remove it, whether it's whatever. We, I think we can make a strong suggestion that they replace it in kind with, you know, matching or similar type of material. Because I think that's the goal, is to keep that mature foliage.
Yes, it is.
That's what I'm trying to provide support for here, a foundation of, you need to...
Trouble is...
We're not talking about the one town tree in front of the lot on this particular case. I think we're talking about some restoration and mitigation to...
Yeah, I think what could have been. And I think we can, you know, it'd be good, we don't want to hire an arborist. It's another expense we don't want to see. I think good landscape architects should have that philosophy. And if we see that they're ignoring it, I think it's our duty to maybe bring it up and discuss it and see what, what, you know.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. You also have to consider the fact that in building, there are setback requirements, and if we're giving consideration to a set tree, the house has to be so far back from the tree, and in doing so, you may be forced to the builder to encroach into another setback in the side of the property. So that is one of the issues that you service when we're talking removing trees.
That's a good point, but you can remove them offsite, hold them in the nursery and bring them back. I mean, I've done that many times on projects, but... And the other issue is obviously, now that we're elevating all these properties, you know, a lot of the established existing material is going to be impacted. In fact, this, what's referred to here as a triple royal, I think is an anodyne palm, just overgrown. The palms don't like to be backfilled against. So I think the survival of that cluster is going to be, sorry, is going to be doomed at this point.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not advocating for palms at all.
No, no, I know, I'm just saying, for, I'm just an observation.
Yes, I agree.
Yes, Roger.
I just wanted to get clarification on the diagram.
Can you come up?
Sure.
Roger Brenner, alternate member of the flag and zoning. I'm just asking for clarification on the diagram. The trees that are noted on, I believe that's the south side, and the trees that are noted on the north side look like they're planted extremely close to the border. In fact, the circles, the one, two, three, four, five circles at the northwestern side actually are drawn to go over the neighbor's edge. And I believe it's the ones on the west that were the Montgomery palms that are noted as interfering with drainage. Is that correct? That's the second question. Which of those are the Montgommerys?
I thought it was the south.
It's the south side.
So this side?
Yeah, I have it on the map.
Okay, so, yeah, so, so the proposal would be to move those back, or well?
Waiting.
We were saying that, yeah. These would have to be moved back to avoid the conflict with drainage.
Well, they, yes, that was the recommendation by the...
So, and I didn't know whether it's appropriate in town code to have intentional plannings that drape over your, so that's my question.
Yeah, that's normal.
Okay.
We don't want to hat rack trees in the moment, so... All right, can we just talk about the actual information that's presented to us and see if there are any comments on the commissioners?
So I would have a comment that if that palm cluster can't survive, that the drain field slash tank be reoriented so that in that space where it says hoot tank or palm cluster, that some large shade tree could be?
There might be a setback. Is that the drain field, there is a setback from the drain field that the health department requires. So they might not be able to put it that close unless, like you said, unless they completely move it.
There's adequate proof.
The drain field can be split, the hoot tank can be moved, all that is is plumbing. It's always drawn here as one single item, it does not have to be a single item.
Okay, so the recommendation or suggestion is to ignore the triple royal or an anodyne palm that we recommend putting a mature shade tree.
Somewhere, somewhere in that area, yes, that would be.
We should define mature, though.
Well, it has to meet the minimum, as Manny had mentioned, the heights, so it's got to be a minimum.
Not as only if, if the anodyne cluster doesn't make it. Is that correct?
Yes.
And you're talking about that tree right there all the way in the corner, correct?
No.
No, that's what I'm talking about right here. This cluster, we put you here, is not survivable with the lot being raised, that this space be used with some sort of significant shade tree.
I understand, thank you.
I think you understand the conflict that was brought by a commissioner to relocate those Montgomery palms.
Yes, the four Montgomery palms on the southwest side.
What I'd like to suggest as well is that can you ask them to look into planting something like travestous palms or something, you could bring up that image again? So that you just break top, sorry. You break that, again, I keep repeating myself, the vertical mass of that building, it's just unbelievable. So you, you understand?
No, I do, too. I love your ocean.
Or something that compensates for the fact that we're higher, more elevated from the neighbor.
I understand.
Do you include consideration of changing the wall behind the palm to also soften it?
The architecture?
Yes.
I think we're past that point.
Well, I think we're past where we could tell them or ask them, but would that be a consideration for them?
Chris, you don't need to hear it, because I was not part of that first meeting.
I think the only comment was back on the landscape plan. So you could ask, no harm in asking?
Well, I mean, we were at, we didn't ask before, because it was based on what we're seeing here. Now that we're, what we're seeing here may not exist in the future, perhaps part of the solution is changing the wall also.
Is that, is there a change of material from the first floor and second floor of that? It's just a shadow. And the horizontal on the right.
You mean on the top?
On the right.
Can you go to the front rendering, please? Are you talking about on the right side? It would be right there, right? I think that's a change of material.
Well, I think to that point, if...
Going around.
I'm not sure that this can be added on at this stage, but I, I think it can be a suggestion, since it's been, the architecture has already been reviewed, and I was a nay.
All I'm saying, all I'm making is a suggestion.
Yeah, no, I...
That it would affect what type of tree we would...
But I think...
Except if... They have to make a change to the trees.
Well, the Montgomery palms are going to stay. I'm talking about supplementing the travestous palms adjacent to the, to the building itself that will at least shroud.
I agree, I don't think anything's going to help but to block it out.
Right.
And to block it out is the most solid you can get from top to bottom.
Well, a Montgomery palm, if, I mean, if anyone else is familiar with it, isn't it one of the slimmest, sparsest canopy?
It's a very, actually, it's depicted correctly on that rendering. It is.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
That might be...
That's what I'm trying to mitigate, it starts with...
Or even like a fox tail, it's very pretty. I don't know the way it's sitting.
Even the other side is fully charred.
All right, let's, sorry, let me start a time up here.
This is why we needed the landscape architect here.
Yeah, but the suggestion from the commission, from my standpoint, is to add, not remove the palms, add travestous palms along the base of what you're proposing here. Mitigate if the landscape architects wants to change from Montgomery fox tail.
Are you advocating that the palm be close to the base of the wall?
No, they have to remove it, they got to move it further in.
Just in.
To get off the drainage conflict. But as well as that, I'd like to suggest that we have at least two or three travestous palms that will mask.
And maybe a palm would be too big to, once we move it back a little bit towards the house, changing the tree might be actually a great idea.
Well, we don't want to reduce the number.
No, I know that.
So... Anything else? I think we got to move on here. So we're going to, can I have a motion to whatever?
I'll make the motion to defer.
I don't want to defer. This thing has been hanging over this builder's head for a long time, and it meets the code. I just don't get why we're penalizing, it seems to me we're almost penalizing these people. Granted, it'd be nice, the landscape architect could have shown up, but she's ill. It meets the code, what are we doing? Are we rewriting the rules here? I just want to call it.
Dave, I, I was in your position until we saw this picture here, but it is our, and if they brought the architect, if they'd have brought the landscape architect in, that we could set conditions and negotiate an answer today, I'd be all for it, because I don't want to see this again. This, this is my third time, and I don't want to see it for a fourth. But we don't have anybody here that can commit and to a change in what this elevation. And that's what our purpose, why we asked for it to come back here, so that we could see what they were doing. And this is not an acceptable elevation.
But I will make sure that what you guys are, everyone is requiring for us to do, that will be taken care of.
Yeah, I think that's, again, time is of essence here, obviously, but I think, as they've said, and I know Neil's concerns, I mean, this thing has been hanging around too long.
We're agreeing to some other permit.
I wouldn't have approved this mission. I did vote negatively the only time I had the opportunity to review it, but I think it's come this far. I think we've, we've made the terracing at the rear, we've made some huge improvements. I think now we have to depend on the landscaping to shroud the building as best we can and move on.
You are suggesting that we give a conditional approval today?
Correct, with the fact that staff and any commissioner that wishes to see what is resubmitted in coming, what's it, if it deviates from what we've been talking about here, then we'll call it back. We'll have staff bring it back.
Oh, well, you can't do that.
No, I know, but you can't.
You have to either give conditional approval now, or you have to defer, because I don't want to see it again. Because you can't, you know, come in one by one and make decisions. And we can't share individual comments because of sunshine law, so we...
No, I understand, I know, I just, I'm trying... No, I understand, I know, I just, I'm trying to, I know we have a problem, I think we have a resolution. It's how to ensure that resolution is provided, I think is the issue, so I think, Neil, we're going to have to depend on staff. And I would suggest independently, you can look at what's submitted. Discuss it with staff if there's an issue.
Mr. Chair, if I may, if we're going to make a conditional approval, then I think the comments that were made were that they need to remove, obviously, the palms that are in the drainage, so that would be one condition, the other condition would be the request to increase the trees on that facade, so yeah, it's a little bit more shaded. Besides that, it's trying to make sure that staff has some, you know, specific direction so it knows that it can move forward with the building plans if they receive the revised landscape plan.
Okay, no, I think that's fair.
But, mate, I'm not if this hurts something, but when you're talking about removing the trees because of the drainage issue, we don't want them removed, we want trees moved closer to the house off the drainage. And I don't think that we want the additional palms, travelers or whatever to be a request rather than a requirement.
Okay, well, by code, if we're saying that their current landscape plan meets code, the code requirements, then we would need some authority to request additional trees. And if the board is just recommending additional trees, it's just a recommendation. So right now, what I'm hearing from the discussion is that what's with our code right now, that they have trees that come with drainage. So they certainly have to remove those, get them out of the drainage, whether that's leaving them back closer to the wall or what have you, or replace them with different trees, that's the code issue. But if the request is, we'd just like to see more trees and they satisfy the basic requirement for the landscape plan, then it's just a request.
But can we not have the authority to require something for approval?
This is, correct, Chris? It's in front of us for review again. Fine, meets the intent of the. But it's under review again, we have the option or the authority to look at it and see if, you know, there's still something that's inadequate. And we can, I'm sure we have the authority to request or require.
Yeah, I don't know that you have the authority to require additional trees if the evidence support that they satisfy the landscape.
It's not additional trees, it's such, right?
No, it's, it's, this is a very abnormal situation. I mean, the fact that that house has what's presented there as its landscape, the foundation screening is inadequate. And I, I think it's got to be required, can't be.
I understand what you're saying.
But help us get a, get a term here to.
If the board's not satisfied with the current detection and they want to see what will happen when they comply with the codes, remove the trees out of the drainage, you can defer. Alternatively, if you want to make it conditional, we just need a staff direction as to what are we requiring and what is the suggestion? And if they're satisfying, if our zoning official says that the proposed plan satisfies code with the existing trees, then it is a recommendation for more trees.
Well, I've heard this lady, I can't remember her name, sorry.
Regina.
Regina. Accept and agree to do that.
Okay, then that's fine, if that's what they want.
Am I correct?
You're very correct.
Okay.
I'll make sure it's done.
Okay, I have one more comment on this, on this, on this point. What is the, what is happening with the trees that are in the right of it?
Hope that gumbo limbo stays. Is that?
Is, is that the gumbo limbo that is now?
No, that's.
I think it's.
There? Or is this?
Outside, I think it's outside, actually.
It's literally outside of, so it's right on the corner?
Yes.
Yeah, it's outside, so right now we've got the fence, the gumbo limbo is outside, it's in the right of way, that would need to stay.
It's in the right of way, so hopefully that will be protected, I think that, that's a good.
Well, there's, there's multiple trees that are outside.
Well, some of those, I mean, I know you've been there, obviously. So, I know, exactly, I go, I'm there all the time.
There's a royal palm. That is, and there's another palm that's more towards the street than the actual gumbo limbo. All I'm asking is who's removing them or are they staying?
Isn't that kind of property? Kristy, sorry.
Can't tell if I'm served, is it in there?
It's in the right of way, I can tell.
This one, this one is on the side of the street.
Could we pull up that one picture just so I can see where the gumbo limbo is?
You want to, you have the pictures, you know, I can just play them.
Well, I'm asking if the tree that's in my picture is the tree that's on the draw.
That's proposed.
Oh, okay.
That is my question. That's the triple.
You'll take it in color next time?
It's in color, I don't, my color printer wasn't working, so. And on the high salary that I get here.
They pay all of us. Yeah, it's, the fence is on the property.
Okay, here's the, here's a much closer up picture of the corner of the lot, the gumbo.
This one shows it, actually.
There's.
For those who can't remember, the gumbo is that faded tree in the distance in the, there.
That's like a hot mess, but I'm just. It's kind of ugly.
Is there a gutter there?
You're talking about the storm drain?
Yeah.
There is no storm drain on that side.
So there'll need to be a swale put in for this. Town code, I believe. It's going to be tough.
To keep that one tree right there.
That becomes town responsibility to decide what to do with it and how to swale it, et cetera, et cetera.
No, it's with the building, with part of the building.
Part of the building, okay.
Stay at the old engineer. Meet town codes and the swale is going to affect that. That's really not anything we can do about that.
No, but that, that is why I would have liked, that's why I would have liked a landscape architect to tell me what, what can be done there and what can't be done. That's, I'm not getting that answer, and this is like the third meeting that no landscape person is deemed worthy to show up, just.
Well, I think, let's, let's put it this way, we can have staff talk to the landscape architect. And you can see the feeling on this commission, and I think it's unanimous in townwide or neighborhood wide. The preservation of those trees would be a priority if they can be saved with whatever proposed new drainage is required. I don't think the royal palm would suffer, I'm not, I can't speak to the gumbo. You can. Because this is town swale, this is not development swale.
No engineering.
Yeah, no engineering, yes. So, again.
Morning, I read that part just the other day, so this is something that we've actually discussed, Public Person and I, about those trees, obviously, a gumbo limbo, you know, is is that type of tree that the town, you know, tries to preserve whenever they can. That is something that we will be exploring, the palm that's closer to the front right there definitely is gone. But the requirement for the swale is that it be a minimum six inches deep below the edge of pavement. And that it be, the center of the swale be halfway between the property line and the edge of pavement. What we're looking at right now with the fencing is approximately sitting on where the actual property line is. So the swale would actually be ahead of the gumbo limbo. That is something that town staff has actually discussed already about doing their best to maintain at least the gumbo limbo. And, and, you know, work with the contractor to keep that in place and still, you know, have, have their partner.
Okay, we could make a, excuse me, a condition, I mean, it is, that's qualifying as a specimen tree. Those can be root proven, I know that, maybe the developer, builder, whoever. If it is deemed to be an obstruction to the proposed drainage, it could be root proven and moved down to the site and supplement one of their proposed gumbo limbo trees. So I think we, we want to make every attempt to preserve it. Gumbo's can be relocated quite easily. And we could actually make that as a condition that, you know, that if the existing gumbo limbo is obstructing the drainage improvements, then the tree should be relocated, root proven and relocated on site.
Can I ask you a question more? Did we make a conditional motion that includes the possibility of either fox tails or travel palms on one aspect and the gumbo limbo on another, and if that satisfies everyone here moving to think forward? Is, is that binding upon the people building that?
I think that gives, that's two of the conditions, the third one is still the, to be on some, the third one is though where the hoot tank is, the three ponds. If they, if they can't be encapsulated with, as the lot is raised. If they won't survive, then.
The existing forty-eight triple royal palm cluster you're speaking about?
Yes, yes.
Neil, thank you.
I think we have a motion to defer that was on the table, is that when drawn, it's now going to be conditional?
I don't think it was seconded.
So, so based on the conversation, what I would recommend is that you do a conditional approval with relocation of conflicting trees with the drainage. Ideally to closer to that side elevation. That the applicant accepts adding additional trees to that same area to include more foliage. Specific type of palm was. If the existing triple royal will not survive, we place the shade tree that meets the required height of the code. And the intent is to preserve as many trees as possible with the existing gumbo limbo to be relocated on site.
I think you said the existing royal palm doesn't make it, I believe.
I moved that move.
And then again, I know you said that if it doesn't make it, to make sure that we give you a nice mature shade tree.
Yes. I mean, not, not one that meets the minimum requirement.
That cover everything?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
Okay, I, seriously, I do make that motion per, per Kristy's description.
So one of the second one was for them to add more triple palm. Do you have an idea, do you want him to accept a number of triple palms?
And I believe you said six to eight.
She read it correctly. Okay, so I make the motion.
I think staff knows the intensity of this discussion.
Second, hold in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
It would be kind and we don't want to see her again, okay?
Yes, it is. Stephanie Portis is awesome.
See here, where are we now? Okay, moving on. The proposed flat roof ordinance. Carla, well, Kristy, can you help us on this one?
I'll let you take it away, Kristy. Thank you. So if you recall, the direction was to allow for flat roofs with restrictions on variety restrictions. So the ordinance in front of you is still in draft form because going through the town's code, looking at everything that was impacted by then allowing for flat roofs, created a lot of issues. So what we tried to do was to go through it, and I know the building official still has a couple of comments as well, and I tried to, based on the minutes, make the changes that were specifically requested, while at the same time, bringing out some areas that we probably need to discuss further and perhaps clean up a little bit. So I can walk through the draft ordinance and that would be the best way to do it?
That would be. Does everybody agree?
I have one comment. It seemed to me that the conflicts that occurred in here were when we got outside of RSE and ART and RSF. Is there a reason that we need to bring them into this? Because it's a whole new discussion now of what do we do with RHM heights and roof structures on things that were actually never discussed in front of this panel.
I had a similar thought.
That's totally up to you, I guess to give them a perspective of.
I'm not saying it doesn't eventually need to be addressed, or whether we, I mean, clearly we've got flat roofs on high buildings. So that you know, to try to, to get this during the week and digest what the impact is going to be on commercial building, and not, not commercial, but multifamily structures to me was kind of daunting. I made comments in the margins, but I, you know, I haven't heard any solutions considerations from the building official, from Corey, from Mr. Marsh, who are expect greatly and his experience with this kind of stuff. It's, it's, I, I just don't know why do we have, is there, is there a way to encapsulate it that that's not brought into it, at least at this go around?
I think it was just.
Certainly, it's your pleasure if you want to keep that, the multifamily, the, you know, districts out, but we certainly can verify that the allowance for flat roof is limited to specific zoning districts.
Yeah, I share a similar, I, I was surprised to see the multifamily sneak in there, I, I know it was part of the whole review. Because that may have other issues, we haven't even approached it.
Right, I agree.
So I think, you know, we identified the issues as a single family issue.
Residential.
Right. So I, I agree.
So what we did, the residential.
Say something really quickly?
Sure.
I'm just keeping in mind some of the ones down south, that they may be zoned RMM, but they still build single family?
Yes.
So is that going to impact them from being able to build a flat roof? If we don't consider that.
Well, I'm really in their statement in the, in there that says that if they elect to do that, they have to follow the ordinances of RSE and RSS. So so I think that, I think that would capture.
Yeah, if it doesn't, I think when we, I'm sure we'll get to the, the multifamily zoning at some point for the same issue, so I would, I would hope that it either. So I would, I would hope that it either staying care of, of the RSF zoning as it stands, or else it'll be brought up if and when we get to it.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, so actually there are, um, existing, and I guess there's always the will or the wish. It's, it's, I mean, people want to stand on their roof, but look at the roof, I'd see. That's, that's what it is. It's, it's, you know, they're, they're not considering the impact of the neighbor. It's, you know, it's a place where somebody wants to go and have a drink and look at ocean. Is it safe? Is it something that town wants? It's why we're here. To the meeting this morning. And, um, there are examples in some RMM areas where I, I don't know if they were ever permitted. It looks odd to me that stairs have been built on the sides of buildings. And, you know, people actually use, uh, these spaces, uh, occasionally.
Yeah, great.
As things, so, you know, it, 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 especially when we have visitors. It, you know, places that, uh, we have people from other town that come, you know, bump into the terrace. Different relationship, aid or not aid. That come in, uh, they, 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 they want to do these, these kind of things. So, you know, um, specifically the use of roofs or recreation of the areas. Uh, I think we probably should look at that across the board when we talk about flat roofs.
Well, we've addressed that through the RS, uh, set.
Correct. So it's, it's not, not just, uh, you know, by the, by the RSF, but all that zoning.
Yeah, but again, we, we can't cross over here. All right, pre-existing conditions, we can't reach back. Um, I'm sure the condos, there was a condo discussion going on, and I got here this morning. Condos have a certain liability.
Correct. So there, there's also one that I'm actually looking at at the moment. Where there's our request to actually put AC units on our roof. But there are no screening requirements. So.
On a RM?
Uh, this is a-
Yeah.
So there are no screening requirements. So yes, we, we have gaps all across. So, I mean, I mean, maybe we don't want to bite too much on the elephant at this time, but-
Okay, I don't think, we gotta do this in increments. Because we're going to get a lot of cross pollination here and just be all, sorry. It's, again, put that on and again, those are workshop items. That's why we try to stimulate the workshop because it's-
Well, no, this was already worked shopped and it was dropped into-
No, no, I know, but I'm talking about the, the RMF.
They cut the piece out.
Let's, let's just keep it out of there. We're, we're, we're going to get too bogged down and we're, we're going to lose what our soul is.
So if we do RMF, we don't need any further direction from the commission. We can do it right here in a future meeting.
You were given the task to discuss flat roofs and come up with solutions to bring back to the commission.
All right, where am I going off track here? I think we, the, the the goal was to address single family flat roofs. And I think that's part A. Part B will be RMF. That's-
RSE first and then RMMR.
Christie asked a question, I think, unless I'm the only one agreeing.
No, I agree.
We, we're going, we're reaching, overreaching right now. So is anybody else? I mean, I think, you know, Cory had given us all this reference here to work with. I think everybody's had an exciting read. I think, are there any other concerns that staff may have? Or commissioners?
Well, I think there were some questions on here that we need to address.
We do want to work on it just to take out the R, RHM and RMM and then bring it back and Cory will be present here as well. Should we about Christie, what would you prefer to do?
Let me just go through a couple of the comments just to make sure we're all on the same page. Is that going to make the change so that it just applies to something right? Make those changes to it. Um, there is a discrepancy early on in the picture. Very beginning regarding the maximum pitch, there was a discrepancy. Um, the maximum pitch shown isn't the maximum pitch that's currently with toes. We just need to keep that. Then going down from there, um, then remove the figure sixty-four dash four, obviously. Sections deal with other zoning districts, so we'll clean that up. The one area was a bit of housing types, and I just left that as a question. This is in sixty-four fifty-four. Regarding manufactured housing. Uh, whether we wanted to leave that the same. Right now it includes a permission, no flat roofs allowed, meaning that we're housing. So I had that as a question.
May I ask a question? The, um, I didn't see things dealing with solar panels, for example. Uh, whether they have to be behind the screening parapets or, there is a language that says things allowed by federal or state law, but I think we might specifically state what we intend for solar panels.
Yeah, that gets down a little bit further in the next couple of sections. Is there any change to sixty-four fifty-four or just the, the manufactured housing with no flat roofs allowed?
Pre-manufactured.
Does anybody know that in the town?
We don't have any, but I don't know that, um, we are able to determine the, uh, structure, literally, when an application is made to do a manufacturer home, the only thing that's permitted are the exterior components, the electrical connection, the slab, the AC slab on the exterior. The water hook up, you know, to, to the city. That's it. We, we, there are no inspections to include the act. So there are some, uh, various state regulations with regards to, um, the town's involvement in the inspections of, uh, pre-manufactured.
I don't think we allow, sorry.
I just have one question. Um, are we allowed to prohibit, um, antennas, headlight issues according to the FCC?
I don't think we can outright prohibit them. We can, I think we can address, if it's allowed by federal state law, like solar panels, there's an exemption for solar panels. Is that pre-authorized? If it's somehow allowed by FCC as a federal law or state law, we have to allow for it. We can't put some restrictions on screening and things like that. I would treat it similar to employees and everybody, what you're able to do there, telecommunication, telecommunication facilities. So that gets further down. I'll just leave this one as is. We'll address it.
Yeah, I think.
I think that does lead us down to, um, my comments and questions when we get down to section sixty-seven thirty-seven, which is where I tried to put everything now. So if someone wanted a flat roof, what we're going to be looking at now is sixty-seven thirty-seven. Um, and not have it scrambled throughout the different zoning districts. And this digs into both y'all's comments about what are we going to allow? And if we're going to allow or if it's allowed by law, are there screening requirements?
I might comment. Gulfstream, my, um, uh, son-in-law built a very nice home on the water. And, uh, it was high-tech, uh, home. Um, and they had solar panels. And what Gulfstream required them to do was actually to lower the height of the roof so that the parapets would not interfere with the solar panels, but would hide it from a ground level or adjacent, uh, single family home view. But to do that, it meant that the roof had to be lowered.
Lowered charging.
Yeah. So you're not prohibiting the use of solar panels, which I think would be illegal under federal.
Does our projected parapet height here effectively screen?
Okay, what house is that?
Oh, well, it was, let's see, fourteen twenty-four, it was on the fourteen.
Yeah, I did that, I did that, that's-
You did?
I thought you were describing my house there.
Well, it was, it was the, uh, the Warehan.
Yeah. Anyway, sorry, I just sounded familiar.
Did I describe it correctly?
Yes, we had to do a man's search.
Yeah.
We had that, um, issue with solar panels brought up to our HOA, on that on the board. And you can also determine where, where placement of it, for instance. We didn't want it on the front pitch of the roof. We would allow it in the back. So there are some, some requirements that we might want to look at as far as, um, where placement, because I think that would be a big issue as part neighbors.
Yeah, unfortunately, state energy code, you can't deny folks from using solar, but we can encourage, you know, um, disguising or shielding them. So it's a very fine line right now. Now, we had a hundred and thirty-two solar panels on that house. Anyway, we're getting off track here.
Couple of comments for Christie and Mae. Both have to do with parapets. Now, this may be consistent, but it looked inconsistent to me in certain places. Parapets are referred to as three feet and other places thirty-two inches. So that's just, if, if that's consistent because of tie beam or something, I'm missing what that four-inch difference is, but I, some places I saw three feet parapet, another place I saw thirty-two inch parapet. Uh, the other more substantive-
Isn't that thirty-two because it didn't meet code as a barrier?
Yes.
So thirty-two is important.
Oh, yeah. I have the same comment. So, it, it within here, they're interchanged.
So thirty-two is what we'd want?
Yes.
Consistent. Consistently. Uh, the other one is, is that-
So you want thirty, regardless of the type of flat?
Yes. Yes. Good point.
The, the other one is, is the use of parapets with the slope-proof house. Um, we approved a project a couple of years ago. And I remember the, uh, architectural renderings of the house and it looked like a flat roof parapeted house. But once it was built, uh, it has a substantial slope-proof, uh, extending ahead above the parapet. I, I think that's my personal opinion. That's, it needed to be, to be fish or foul, as they say. Not, you, you're, uh, a parapeted flat roof house and meeting our definition of flat roof. Or you're a slope-proof house without a parapet. Is it, is there an architectural reason why you'd put a parapet on a slope?
It's a carryover. That's White House on the border here. Is, that was the one that really got me crazy because it, it, you, you, you're just fooling yourself.
So it's, it's either one or the other. I agree. And that's why we're here. Let's put in here that, that, uh, parapets are only to be used with flat-roofed houses. We've defined a flat-roofed house. Uh, you have a definition of what flat roof is, and if it's a slope-proof, no parapet. Is that, that, I hope that doesn't create any conflict, but I've seen a couple of examples that are just wow, what were they thinking?
Well, Rick, I think it's because we required it. They wanted the flat roof look, but it was code that it had to have pitch. That's why we're here now.
That's why we're on this mission to get this-
It will go away naturally because we're going to allow them to have that. But nothing wrong with stating it either.
Okay.
So-
I have a comment on sixty-seven thirty-seven. That appears in another place also in the document is the use of elevator bulkhead and elevator housing protruding into the space above a flat roof. What's the difference in the two and are either required? Do you have an elevator without having either one? That's a discussion we had had in a meeting here.
Yes, you. Residential elevators do not, the overlight is not as high as the commercial. So there should be, with us allowing twelve-foot floor to ceiling or floor-to-floor heights, there's plenty of room to accommodate within the-
When you put our two-inch and above.
Yeah.
So can that be struck?
Confirm that.
You know, you, you don't need to, uh, go, you don't need to go through the roof with your elevator shaft.
Right, yeah.
That's, that's, but can I, um-
Sorry, you'd have to come. I will, so we have to publicly get to it.
Hey, Alonso, Alonso and Associates.
The road builders.
You made a comment that kind of like shocked me a little bit about this minimum thirty-two inch parapet. And why is that?
It's to discourage use, recreational use of the flat roof.
Okay, so you're not saying that you have to have a thirty-two inch parapet?
It's maximum.
Max, eh? Scared me. If, if I can take two minutes here, um, I have a ten o'clock doctor's appointment, which I'll blow off if I have to, but, um-
We got it, so don't worry.
Yeah, so, um, as you know, I'm building the house in ninety-five by hundred, which I had came before you guys, maybe three months ago or four months ago, whenever it was. And I was going to apply for a, uh, a variance uh, to get a flat roof, which I was somewhat, wasn't told that I couldn't do it, but I was somewhat discouraged that it probably wouldn't go. I'm now in the process of building. It looks like I am going to be putting a roof on that house um, the first week of April. I have halted my original plan of doing that convoluted and if I may say stupid roof design that the architect did. Because it has the potential of many leaks down the road and, uh, unfortunately for the owner, I'm seventy, I'm going to be seventy-one next week and, uh, I think I won't be around when these roofs are leaking and, and it won't be my problem. But, uh, for his sake, um, I had redesigned the roof so that it's a flat roof that drains properly. And we don't have to put, uh, a, she called for a, uh, a shingled roof. Mr. Guy suggested that I still apply for the variance, uh, since that may not make your final approvals by April. Uh, with the hope that the fact that you're all going in that direction, that when I come before the commission uh, on this variance, that I can say I was before the Architectural Review Board and they have blessed me with a flat roof. And, and you approve it. So, um,
Yeah, Christie, I mean, we're in zoning in progress, so everything freezes. I think it's adopted. I really don't know how to answer.
Does it mean, does your proposed flat roof meet every one of the requirements that we've talked about? Thirty-two inch parapet, nothing on the roof, no access to the roof? No?
Yeah, no, I, I think we can't, yeah, we can't.
It's a twelve-foot issue, it's a separate issue. Okay, well, here, here's the, here's the thing. So my, my, my roof, my, my new design, um, the existing parapet stays exactly where it is. So from the front- So from the front, anywhere for you look at the house, the house does not change one bit.
All right, Brittany, I, I'm gonna stop, time is, I think Mr. Guy has given you the right direction. Unfortunately, I think we have to go through that process.
Okay.
Because we're, as I said, zoning and.
Times. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna go through the process.
I mean, I think you understand that, I think we all support that, because as, as, you know, Commissioner Carey just pointed out, it was idiotic to have a mix or blend of pitch and flat roof, so, or parapet. So I think I would go, Mr. Guy will be present in that meeting, I'm sure, and so will.
Yeah.
I think, I, I think it's fair, and anybody can voice that, I think you'll have it. We cannot change.
That's all, that's all I want.
The only thing I, I would say is, if, if you're going to try to be, comply with where we're going, then you better comply with all the elements of where we're going.
Yeah, we, we're not putting anything on the roof. It's going to be a flat roof. With, with an eight inch to a sixteen inch parapet at the worst condition, so that's, so there won't be any.
Okay.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, let's move on if we can, Christie is.
So.
On the, the one question I had was on sixty-seven thirty-seven subsections two and three.
What happened to the?
And I think it kind of, your comments about the elevator bulkhead and the elevator housing, what I was trying to say, what we would allow in subsection two for authorized flat roof elements, and then in subsection three, what is absolutely prohibited from being up there. So that's when I made distinction, if we don't need a distinction between bulkhead and housing, I can simply take that out if there's sufficient space, given the, I can take out that references in the.
Yeah, if there's a, some peculiar condition, then they'll have to come back. We don't want to encourage more vertical projection.
And on your memorandum page. Christie, on your memorandum page, or, excuse me, it's not yours, I guess this is Corey's. The elevator bulkheads were the second bullet down, fourth, fifth bullet down, second sub bullet, elevated bulkheads were in there, so need to make Corey aware.
Do we see this, do we want to see this one more time before it goes to commission, or do we send it to commission with these changes?
Do we know if we can, it's going to be translated directly?
I look at it as, if I were a commissioner, I would want to know that we had read the ordinance and passed on that before it was sent to them.
Because it's going to be parsed and, and. Okay, cut up, I, I think you have to see how the reference is put in the.
Yeah, I, I agree on this.
That's a good point.
I hate to, I hate to have to do that. I don't see how I could.
No, it's important, I mean, we've been fighting long hard for this.
Good work. So, um, do we define a pitch of a flat roof? There's sometimes a difficulty in doing inspections is, but different roof types, there's wording in the code that says positive pitch.
No, I think.
For a specific type, I think the minimum is a quarter inch.
Right, I think, sorry.
From anywhere from zero to three twelve is considered a, a flat roof, but it's when it comes down to the, the positive pitch language in the art of building code.
It's a quarter inch according to us, so it's. That's it, we can't, the building code over, you know, that. So it has to meet the minimum quarter inch per foot. Now, if it means that there's a longer run and it's four inches, that's, that's a fact of building code, and that's it.
Unless I misunderstood, Christie defined flat roof as anything that wasn't a slope proof, didn't meet our slope proof minimum, is that what we want?
No, you, for a life safety issue, you have to have a minimum of one quarter inch per foot slope.
I think what, what's, what's too much that doesn't?
No, no, there's a, that is a minimum order, but generally for flat rules, it says positive pitch, which is again, it's, it means as arbitrary.
No, no.
A roof is never flat like zero, like you put a level on it, that's, that's a bad thing.
Let me clarify again, okay, it's not, it's the roofing material, the finished roof itself has to have quarter inch per foot slope minimum period. There's no, I, I don't see what the arbitrary factor here is.
I, I think, you know, I think the, the thing is existing flat roofs, they didn't, they didn't, they don't give you a slope.
And that's, we can't, how can we address existing flat roofs that are non-conforming? Again, we, we, we're reaching a lot of non-conformity here, and it's starting to concern me. I can understand life safety with railings that are not there for, you know, hazard or that kind of thing, but whatever's past. Sorry. Don't need to make more.
Didn't we specify a quarter inch?
Yeah, we can't specify the building code. Yeah. All right. All right, so we want to have this come back one more time for final review, that it? We need a motion or not?
Just consent, that's, that's fine.
I think we're all in agreement?
Yes.
Thank you, Rick. Okay, I am slipping down the slope of notes. And I do have one question I want to put on the table.
We have another item.
I know, I, yeah, item four is, I'm just kind of feeding the process here, sorry. The item for proposed administrative variance ordinance, again.
So this was reviewed by you all in December twentieth, twenty-one. At that time, you guys referred, told us to defer it to the town commission, that it was ready for review. The town commission approved it on first and second reading. However, it was brought up by Commissioner Bishalak, a certain issue or concern that he was having in regards to the ordinance itself, that per the current ordinance, because we adopted it, it allows the five percent administrative variance allows it to go into any, encroach into any setback. His comment that it should only encroach into the already existing setback. So if it's on that rear setback, it should only be, any addition should only be made to that rear setback and not to any sides or the front. And I know Neil Henigan does have a kind of sort of a drawing for us to review, and I'm going to put it on the Elmo so that we could see it, and you guys can have further discussion about it, how do you guys want it changed, and so forth, and give directions to staff of how to change it. So as you all can see.
It used to work.
It used to work. A lot of resistance.
Okay.
So one of, that he was referring to when he did show us around the meeting, at the currently stand, as you can see, the encroachment right now is towards the rear setback, let's say that's the front, this is the rear. Right now, our variance stands like, they can make an addition here, even if it would encroach into this setback or this one. He would like to change it to only be where the encroachment already is. So if they want to do an addition, they would, they'll have to do it here to only encroach into this setback that's already existing, but not go into any of the other ones.
That seems to make common sense. Is that, that might be a problem?
Yeah, it's, it's, the cartoon has been around a long time. Thanks for arriving.
Thanks, boy.
I've used it so many times, so cartoon sketch.
Yes.
But you clarified and brought up a good point. I think, yeah, it's a single setback. You can't have multiple.
Did I do it justice?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
No, well done.
That's all, folks.
We're all in agreement?
Yeah.
So is that what goes in the code book?
What's there, what's there originally with very putty?
Have you directed that to, do you, do you all have any other recommendations that you guys want to see changed as well in regards to the administrative variance?
I would like somebody to look, look at, look at the paragraph that went under the picture and review and reword, reword, please, abuse it. I don't know, I hacked this up this morning.
No, it's good, good job.
So I don't know what I can cut out.
Is it here?
Yes, yeah. I think it's, the mistake is this typical fifty by eighty lot, which is only four thousand square feet, so you can't have forty-four hundred persons. This was probably supposed to have been hundred by eighty, I'm guessing. That's, that's.
Okay.
So this is a question for you, Tracy, this has been around so long, I've forgotten what we're trying to accomplish here, and is it to avoid small things happy to go to Board of Adjustment?
Yes.
And that's to save some fees and time?
Yeah.
But anything beyond small, we want to go to Board of Adjustment?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So just a quick product, the way this is drafted now, one of the changes that were made at the last town commission meeting was that not only does this allow for an encroachment of the setbacks, it allows for encroachment of other dimensional issues. And so we put a limitation, and that's the highlighted language, so that it won't allow a further encroachment of height. But it kind of becomes, what we, what I can do is to redraft this, is to make it specific that the only area to be approached is what's the current area to be encroached, but in terms of the calculation, are we then going to reduce that calculation? Because the calculation really looks at the entire setback area, not just a specific setback area. So it's, then we get into math and.
All right, just. I got up on this.
Issues, because the way it's currently drafted is to address smaller issues for anything that's dimensional. So now for being specific that you can only approach one area, then I do think we need really consider the calculation, because that's a very different calculation.
Manny, you're the one that knows the calculations, what do you think?
Well, let me understand, you're, you're, you're asking, because of the area in question, that should be changed to a separate calculation, is that correct?
Well, the, the intent that this ordinance seems to have is that it would allow for encroachments for any setback, so your calculation is based on your total setback area of the property.
Right.
So now, if we're changing the intent, the only place you've approached where you've currently encroached, then wouldn't that also change the calculation? Because now you're looking at a smaller encroachment area and not the full encroachment area of the entire property.
Well, if they're only allowed to go in the area that they're already encroaching, I don't see why it's changed, though, I mean.
But wouldn't the five percent, right now, you calculate the five percent based on all sides?
Right. The total square footage of all of the setbacks is your first figure. Then you take the, the encroachment area calculation, subtract that, and that will give you what you're able to do. Now, if you're able to do it, find that, that you need to change the figures as it stands right now.
Complete the calculation under the definition the same.
Yes, because the total square footage of, of the calculation area gives you, I think, whatever, I don't know, it's the amount that you're allowed to give.
Five percent.
Five percent. So if it falls into that five percent of it. I used to think it was going to be.
The thing I just really want to avoid, especially since this isn't going to Board of Adjustment, is an impact on a neighbor that said, I bought the house, I knew what my neighbor's house was going to be, I knew that the setbacks are fifteen feet, and suddenly you're building at a ten-foot setback to my house, which maybe he has an encroachment, and he's at a ten-foot setback, and suddenly you're, you're really kind of closing down, and this happens without even the neighbor knowing about it, because it went through, you know, an administrative ruling. You know, I, I'm not in favor of increasing encroachments, but Mark works with it, I'm sure there's reasons when you run into projects, but you gotta look at it from the neighbor's perspective.
Well, I think, I mean, usually when they want, if you already have an enclosure, usually what they want to do, they want to do is symmetrical line and finish that encroaching all the way to the end of the structure. I don't, I'm, I don't, I haven't yet to come across anything where they say, if they're approaching on one side, they want to go to the, another side or that side of the structure and perform another encroachment, I, I, usually that doesn't work. They, Jody, the, in my, what I've seen is when they're proposing a structure that's in addition to the only enclosure, just so they can have a symmetric line all the way across to the end of the building, Mark.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and, but if I were the neighbor that, and sometimes either corner, so you, you've got, but let's say this is the neighbor to my rear, and they filled in that white spot and all the way out, you know, I feel that that was a, a bit unfair to me as the neighbor.
Well, I, if I can say, I don't think that's, I think that's what we're doing here. I don't think that part would be allowed, that whole green or red, you, if the building's already meeting the minimum setback there where that green is at, the only place that that the addition can go would be the other side of that open space on the right lower hand corner, that's the only place, and he would be allowed to put that addition. Because if we're saying you can only encroach in the area that's already encroached, that one side on the left, there's no encroachment. You see what I'm talking about?
The more you discuss this, the more confusing it gets, I can tell you.
That's why we have a Board of Adjustment.
Yes, Manny and Karen at one point in we were going through.
Is the five percent calculation having to affect there?
And that, hence, it goes back to the question, should that five percent be changed? Because if, if it's five percent of only that one property line versus five percent of all four sides, that number's a big difference. So maybe you do change that calculation.
Well, I don't think you should be awarded, because we're changing it, and they allow more square footage.
I think it makes it less.
Yeah, it makes, it will make it less.
It makes it less, because your five percent is only applied to one small corner, one side.
Instead of taking the entire, it's going to be one.
Well, if you, okay, so if you, if you took that as a practical thing, you don't even be able to relax more than your fifty square feet.
Right. So maybe, so maybe you don't, I don't know the answer to that. The answer to that.
But even if you were saying, maybe even if you made it more, you still could only go as far as that, uh, end of that building on the right hand side.
This is permitting you something the size of a single car garage. That's the way to think. 200 square feet is a single car garage, correct, Manny?
Yeah, that area right there?
Yes.
Well, whatever it is.
Right.
This has no area of reality.
Pardon?
No, this doesn't have any area of reality, but it's a good. But the 5% is of the total structure.
No, it's not.
No, it's, it's 5%, 5% of the total.
Yeah, required.
Of all four sides, of all four sides.
That's why if we do it of only the one side of encroachment, it's a much less number.
It wouldn't, I mean, it lets you put up, build a closet.
Well, so.
And on some large lots, it would still work to let you build something large, but it wouldn't be probably helping lots that are 8,000 to 10,000 per feet.
So, um, can I just throw this out there again? Ultimately, it's up to the pleasure of the Commission to make this decision.
I can't hear you, please.
I said ultimately, it's up to the pleasure of the Commission to make this decision. So if we're basically limiting, um, encroachment only on an existing side, we're saying we can only add it on this side. And you cannot encroach beyond the existing encroachment. I think that already creates limits. We get into the map, it doesn't make any difference because you can only go usually 5 feet. That's the difference because we had our whole 10-foot setback. The, the, the new building can only match the existing on that side only. So doing all the math would make no difference because if there's a limit dimensionally that, you know, you cannot.
This picture depicts the green area that would be allowed is outside of the current building envelope. I understand to the right side of that you could only go, I can see. Why couldn't you go all the way to the hash mark? Is the white, what is the white depicting? Green space, setback, what?
This green?
The white is setback.
Buildable public setback.
Yeah.
That's the current setback. So that area is already encroaching.
The only the solid green is, is allowed.
Not, not to the other side of that encroachment?
No, not, not on the red side.
One, not on the red side, but one could still continue to green.
That is what, um.
That's not what we, I don't think.
Why couldn't you go to the right side?
That is proposed, that is.
No, so he would, yeah.
And you could go.
Yeah, you could fill this.
Okay, so Carla, go to the right.
Go to the right. Why can't you fill all that in?
Yeah, you can't do that. Yeah, you can't.
Okay, that's my point.
Yeah, either way, yeah.
And you could, and you could encroach.
As long as it stays white, you can do anything you want.
No, but, but how about encroaching?
Okay, so then, so then you could, the hash below that reverse L is, is available as a singular encroachment subject to by the 5% rule.
Right. It's.
By the way, the way the code also stands, I'm also thinking about what if this is the front? Do you want the administrative official being able to approve an administrative variance for the front setback? But technically, they can under the, if the existing encroachment is in the front.
The front doesn't bother me as much as it's the neighbor's property.
So I'm going to go back to the 5%. If it's 5% of the whole, it's a bigger number. So let's just say they'll probably get to fill the whole side for like the, doing the math right now. You know, if it's 5% of one encroachment side, they'll never get to fill the whole side because it's a smaller number. So what, what do we want? What, and I rely on you guys because.
The smaller number because we have a Board of Adjustments that they can take it if they want the bigger number. That's what I wanted to adjust. I was hoping up to avoid Board of Adjustments.
Let me throw this out, please. As I said, we drew this and if, if it was to scale, which it actually isn't based even on the numbers, but if it was, and we said this was, this green was a single car garage, 200 square feet, that happened here to be 5% on another one, that number could be something bigger. But do we want to limit the 5% to a number is what I'm saying. 5% not to exceed.
But it's going to become a ratio again because if it's, if you say 5% not, well, no, never mind.
That caps it. You want, do you want to cap it at a single car garage? You want to cap it at a half a garage? You want to cap it at a closet? I don't know. It can be done.
I guess why? Because if it's based on the size of the home, then a big home gets to do a bigger encroachment.
And I think this all was brought up on one of our commissions because it was affecting people in the South End of town.
Yes, that's what I'm.
Let me, let me bring your idea here. Under, under what we just passed on our current, where it's allowed. With that 5%, we are allowing that somebody encroaches to a completely different. To Rick's point, why should the neighbor that bought a house never had an encroachment from, from his neighbor? Why should he suffer because that neighbor now all of a sudden can build 5%? We're moving that. So the 5% only applies to the lower part, the, the, the part basically where existing encroachment already is. It is, it is only that part that can be encroached. That's the idea behind this whole change that I would like to bring. If you change this to 5% or to 10%, that you would have to come up with a number because 5% what Neil said is, if you go in with 5% of just that particular setback, you're, I think a closet is not even possible, which, which then defeats the entire intent of the ordinance. So we want to, we want to make sure that where there is an encroachment, there's an ability for the administrative, uh, variance to be granted. If the building official sees that there, there is something that, that's not, you know, quite jive with this whole thing, and it could be, it could be misunderstood. It could be encroaching into somebody's personal spaces. It could be, you know, on the wrong side. He'll flip that over. He, if the administrative variance only applies to, he doesn't have to make the decision. He can, he can make the decision if he sees that there's a necessity for it or there's a, there's a reasonable approach to it. If he doesn't, he kicks it over to the Board of Adjustment anyway. If there's a neighbor come, that, that is complaining, the neighbor that is affected by this, if that neighbor is complaining, Board of Adjust, that's already, that's already done. So I think with the 5%, we can leave the 5% to allow somebody to come in front and say, hey, this is what I want to do without really overthinking. And leave it with the building official. It's a, it's an.
Makes sense.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, there's also in the order, uh, is this the minimum use of the variance request? So we kind of monitor that as well.
Yeah. All right.
Now, would you have to take any action or are you done with us?
So what I'll do is revise it so that the only allowed encroachment is where the existing encroachment is. And then everything else would stay the same.
Yep.
I have a Commissioner comment, but it's brief.
Yeah. All right, go ahead.
Are we done with this item?
Yeah.
Item number two certainly brought to mind in the memorandum on the first page of that, that our landscape requirements are way below where they should be. And I was glad to hear Tracy say that, uh, that they're working on that.
Yep.
Uh, just, just for an example, the, uh, minimum number of shrubs required on that house was 36. They used 33 cocoa plums just to screen the air conditioning and pool equipment. So, you know, they almost met the requirement just screening their, their equipment. So we've really got to work on that.
The efficiency is amazing. Thank you.
Do you have something?
You go ahead.
On my street in particular, but on many streets, we have problems with vehicles driving into people's lawns, destroying grass, picking out other items. And I put together three series. I walked all over the whole town. It doesn't seem to be a problem south of Woolbright, but it certainly is north. Uh, and there, there's a number of problems. It's not just the lawns that are getting whack. It's our sidewalk along A1A, which is a disaster. And every time we get it fixed, I see some big truck do a turn on it and crack it and lift it. And I'm not as, I'm not entirely certain what we can do, but as a property owner, I get tired of filling this up, scraping the dirt off the street, uh, putting sod in is, is a losing proposition because it usually dies. And I, I just wondered, is there some way, if we can record the action of whoever does the damage, to have them be responsible for repairing the damage? You know, it, it, it's a real problem when you have yard service and the trash and UPS and Amazon all show up at the same time. And some are better than others, but it's, it's really a pain in the neck. So I just wanted to throw that out and see if we might be able to get some, we might obligate people that are caught on candid camera to repair their damage. And then it's a, it's a cost of doing business in the town. Screen new construction so it doesn't offend the neighbors. But this is, this is offensive to my eye. Broken sidewalks, torn up lawns, and, and none of these events occur without, um, the knowledge of the person who does it. But if they don't get caught, they're out of it.
Yeah, I think what you'll, you'll hear, you have your code officer in the back and what you'll hear from him is that it's really hard to prove who actually did that.
If we take, I caught somebody breaking the act and I.
If you do, call immediately.
Well, I, I did, and I, police responded to it.
Yep.
And still, the owner of the business said, I don't have to do this.
Same thing happened to me.
And ultimately, I just said, why don't you drop 100 pounds of soil? I'll do the work, but it's, you know, it was like up yours. So I, if we could get a little bit of authority in the town to protect our property. Sidewalk, I don't know about the sidewalk in A1A. That might be your deep. But, but it's still a mess.
No, you're perfectly right. I mean, it's, it's a shame. We got Mac on the attack, so.
And that's my, that's my, that's not, that's not that long there. But I don't think that was.
Those are illegal now.
Just so you know, when you encroach into the right of the DOT, that's, that's illegal.
You can't do that. At least it's not a pyramid.
Pyramid with spite.
Yeah.
But those are right. So that means.
The liability, somebody could.
It's a safety issue.
Life safety, according to DOT, that's encroachment in the DOT right of way is a life safety issue.
Yep.
Not with this one in the right of the DOT, nothing wrong with it.
Fundamentally, what, what we have here is decisions that were made by people that developed this town with roads that were.
You're not going to like my, I was just going to say that.
The road widths that we, that we really should have. And curbs and road widening would solve a lot of this, but it's going to make your front yard.
So my, our, my small street is still under the auspices of.
No.
It's not your town, it's town.
No, it's town, but, but what you're saying, what I was going to say is you're not going to like my answer because what the answer is, is widening the road. And that's going to take up half of what you consider your front yard, which is really the town's right of way.
I might be agreeable to that if we can do it.
Well, that's a good point there. I think, I think we have to depend on public.
Just one thing to comment.
Because worse than that is all these little reflectors that are showing up. Trying to do. Yeah, I just have one comment that number of residents, developers, builders have brought up. And, um, it's something made from up to us, but I hope not. Ironically, this classification of 50% value construction, these are the FEMA and the Building Code. There seems to be, and I, I do, I deal with it myself in other towns. There's still some ambiguity out there as to what qualifies for 50%. And just, sorry, I should back up. If you want to do an improvement to your house, you're limited to 50% of the value. If not, you have to bring the whole house up to conformance in terms of FEMA and building. So if you're doing a modest addition to a house, it can become a main, major issue depending on how it is defined. So I'd say I deal with this and I, I hate to say play with that whole issue because FEMA is safe from flooding any extraordinary storm or whatever. Building is life safety. And the qualifications are to value, to get to the value is completely different. FEMA doesn't care if you have carpet, if you have wood paneling, if you have central air, they really don't care. Building part or the life safety and Florida Building Code does. So how you compare or analyze and come up with a value is, there's a lot of contradiction between both, you know, jurisdictions. And it's, it's confusing to applicants, homeowners that want to try to do some modest improvement. So I think we need to, and it, it sounds like it wouldn't come here, but it could come here to this TMZ board for some reason. So I, I, I think we need to have, and I'm saying we need to have some outreach from the town to builders and owners as to how the capitalization is going. And I let Ronnie maybe just respond, but I'm just saying, it's creating a lot of uneasiness within the town. I know you've met with some of the folks, um, you and Ronnie, but it's, it's not just Ocean Ridge, it's every town.
Yeah.
And I don't know if there's a municipal, so is this a workshop issue?
It's, yeah, I'd like it to come eventually to workshops. Everybody understands because you're, you might want to do it personally or you might have a friend that wants to do it or somebody. And I think it's important because it can be a very dangerous threshold for people to get into.
It's fairly easily manipulated.
Yes. Yeah. And, but the criteria has to be consistent. Let's say the biggest disparity is FEMA's classification of value and the Florida Building Code, when it's allowed. I mean, painting, for example, is not, you just need to prime walls. You don't need paint so you don't have to count the cost of painting. You know, so these are little minutia things that add up, but it's been really escalated to.
There's no legal definition, whether it's FEMA's idea?
FEMA has a, has a, has a tabulation, what the criteria. The Building Code doesn't really have. It's up to the building official to, you know, come up or evaluate and see what qualifies as a finished, livable, habitable.
So do we currently reference the FEMA tabulation?
Let's, I'll let Ronnie, just breathe, please, because I got to leave. I'm on stage here.
So, yeah, this is, I, I'll use some numbers. So what we have is a situation, we have some homes where we have people from outside the town that have actually shot up and down the East Coast and have realized that Gulfstream on Manalapan is kind of pricey. But they find these great deals in Ocean Ridge. And this great deal is a host that's over 30 years old and is valued, the property is valued probably 1.3 million. That's an average of what we're looking at.
Now, just for clarification, the value is a. the value is important, because you have to have the two ways, Papa or a market appraisal. And market appraisal is the realistic value. Whatever that appraised value is, you're allowed up to 50% before you have to conform to all the current criteria. So, sorry.
So what it is, is generally, we have a ratio of the land being 75% and the house structure being 25%. With most of these houses that are over 30 years old. So when someone purchases a house, 1.3 million, the value of the structure itself is only 300,000. And it's usually an aging structure that, you know, old cabinets, you know, you need new windows, you do have a new room, and it's at that point, which is usually why someone else sold, and they realize what it would take to bring the house up the road. So we have someone now that's coming in and trying to put $300,000 to refurbish the entire house, and that is what the C R S program discourages. It says if you're going to put more than 50% of the value of the structure, not the property, the structure, then you will need to abide by new construction requirements, meaning that if you're putting in $151,000 into this property that I just talked about, total value 1.3, but the value of the structure being 300,000. Older house, usually over 30 years old. You want to do $151,000 improvement, I mean, $151,000 doesn't go far. We're talking about a roof, new windows, probably kitchen and bathroom, you're there. And the C R S program is what we've adopted in order for us to get the, the, the 20, the 20, the 20% discount that we're getting, being at a level six. So here's the thing, yes, it's nice to get that discount, but what it really means, it's a value of how resilient the town is. That's, that's really what the big number is. It means that when we have a flood, when we have a flood, we would do very well as a town if we maintain these types of building practices. If we allow these homes, 30 plus years old, to basically rebuild at the same height where they are now, it doesn't allow us to improve the drainage on the street. It doesn't allow us to ask them to put exfiltration trenches and trench drains across the driveways. We can't do any of that. And then what happens is that this house stays here and will more than likely flood in the next event. That's exactly what it is. Yes, the person is saying it's a burden and we bought this house and we believe we can do all of this stuff. Unfortunately, there are real estate agents that know and do not share this information with their. And we're seeing it more and more. The document that I issue mostly to new homeowners and people who ask, because there's a fraction that asks, is the Hutchinson's report as to what the subsurface is in the town of Ocean Ridge. It's an engineering marvel. We, we, we're building on a place where, I don't think initially when we did this place, we decided we're going to build on some of the places we're building on right now. It's murky, it's unstable, the, the, you know, I mean, we have to build on piles. We have guys that come here that don't want to build up piles. Right? So, so, so it's education, and maybe we could do a better job as a building department, and we're doing that. I, I want to upgrade the website, put on engineering on it, have an engineering subsection, so people can also see, you know, what we're dealing with, have the Hutchison's report clearly up there, have the swell details and the engineering requirements for these areas. But if, you know, we are shorting ourselves if, if, if we don't encourage someone to meet new standards when they're trying to pump a lot of money into a home.
So let me just expand on that just a little bit. So imagine we have five houses on a street. Four of them have met the requirements and lifted their home. One of them has left, and they're just doing some improvements. Well, they did those improvements and they don't have to lift their home now, they're up to 50%. They've done improvements, those improvements, maybe they're going to last them 20 years. Well, now for 20 years, because they didn't go over the 50% threshold, now for 20 years, we can't raise that road. We can't improve that drainage, because we can't impact that one home on that street. So that's why the 50% is very important in the town. So that we can make improvements, so we can protect the rest of the homes on that street and.
I know, that's why I brought it up, it's, it's a subject everybody should be, become more familiar with.
It's next door to me.
And I don't know what the right answer is, I mean, forcing people to build new is the solution. I'm not sure that.
How about encouraging, right? Rather than force and courage.
Yeah, I mean, encourages it, but it's, yeah, it's, it's a heavy hand, so it does affect, we have that in Palm Beach, but some of what we call the C streets, they're all very low. But the majority of them are going to start. Anyway, I just, I, I wanted to mention that just for everybody to think, maybe if you catch yourself a little more, that you may be getting, it's going to become much more of a discussed item. All right.
I should do that?
Second?
All the favor?
Hi.